Glad to call our meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda, under new business, item A. Laney AIG STEM Medical Biomedical Academy Appendix I, Dr. Smith.
This is Dr. Smith's first meeting in his new job, so let's treat him as.
Well, thank you very much. These two items are, the next two items were presented at our last board meeting, and we do have both principals with us tonight. And we would respectfully ask the board's approval on the EA Laney AIG STEM program, as well as the John T. Hogart International Baccalaureate Diploma Program.
Move for approval? Are we approving both of them at the same time?
We can take, yeah.
Same, okay. No objection, we'll, that motion then to approve both.
Motion to approve both.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They're approved.
Alright, thank you.
That was easy, wasn't it?
It won't be so easy as that.
Money moves over.
Item C, read to achieve alternative assessment, appendix K, Dr. Smith.
Yes. The next item that you have, we have for you a proposal for an alternative assessment. And the state Board of Education has given us some guidance that boards, local boards of education can approve local alternatives to the read to achieve current requirements. And so we would ask that you would approve this item as well.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions?
Have a question.
Mr. Higgin?
There's two.
Yes, sir.
Listed here. But as I recall, the information that we got in our packet showed, I think there was five potential, for example, I think English as a second language might have been one. There were several others in addition to these two that were listed, is that not correct?
Yes, sir. There are seven good cause exemptions. One of which is for students who have limited English, and it depends on how long that they've been in our country and have received our services. What this is, is an alternative beyond those good cause exemptions.
Alright, so those exemptions are automatic?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
They're still available to our students. This is in addition to. You may have heard quite a bit of discussion regarding the portfolio process. This would be an alternative to that portfolio process.
I was thinking these two were part of those, had, were, I thought I remembered reading these two in part of those seven, but okay.
Any other questions?
Also, this is, to be clear, if a student doesn't pass their EOG, is that right?
Yes, sir.
We can, we then go through this process to see if they qualify for proficient rather than having to undergo the summer remediation program?
Yes, sir. And then, there's also in addition to the EOG, a read to achieve test that they can take that might be a little less taxing on them as well. But this is an opportunity for them to demonstrate proficiency to not have to attend summer camp.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Item D, recommendations for school year twenty four, 2014-15 to accommodate continued growth, appendix L, Mr. Hens.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there are basically three recommendations that were made. One is to reopen the College Road Center for kindergarten from Bellamy and pre-K students from Mirsey Williams. The second one was redistricting shifts from Pine Valley to Holly Tree and Pine Valley to Parsley, and from Bellamy to Parsley. And the third one was to consider mobile units for Bradley Creek and Murrayville. Request the board's approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I prefer if we took these individually, and even in the second part, if we took the redistricting of students in the different schools individually.
Okay.
So first, first talk about opening the pre-K center, which I think will probably not engender much discussion. Then deal with the Pine Valley redistricting, then deal with the Bellamy redistricting. And lastly, deal with the mobile units, which will also probably engender very little discussion.
Okay, any, any board members subject to doing these one by one, which I agree that is a good idea. I'm trying to get it on my computer here.
Is there a motion on the floor?
That's my motion, take them individually. One second.
Do you need a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Okay, well, Dr. Higgin's motion is to do these one by one, he's made a motion in second. Is there any other questions on that? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take them one by one, and I'm on the wrong. So the first one then is the College Road under, let's see, that's appendix L, right, Mr. Hens?
Move for approval?
Yes.
Additional recommendations under appendix L.
Okay, so, College Road, you're making a motion, Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes, for College Road.
Second.
Does he step you second there?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on the College Road? If all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just a question for the board. Are we okay with that as a working name?
Yes. Because we do have pre-K as well as kindergarten.
So it's not going to be called the College Road Facility, is it? What's, what's going to be on the?
It'll be the College Road Early Childhood Center.
Okay.
It's good.
That's fine.
Wasn't that one before? Wasn't that one?
It was a pre-K center before. I mean.
It had College Road on there, didn't it?
It was Parsley. It was, it was an annex, Parsley.
Right.
Yeah.
It's actually been on, it's actually was, you're correct. It actually was the Parsley Kindergarten Center for, when we first opened it, and utili, when we first utilized it. And it's been working under several different names. I think finally, we need to have a name that it can, we can officially work under.
So now what's it going to be, is it the College Road?
Early Childhood Center.
College Road Early Childhood Center, correct?
CREC.
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 Okay, so number two on that list then was the, which I guess would be the next point, though we've broken this up. The minor district shifts to move from Pine Valley to Holly Tree and Parsley, and from Bellamy to Parsley, is that correct?
Correct.
According to the motion you made, Dr. Higgin, that's.
I want to do the Pine Valley one separate from the Bellamy one. Just because, you know, we haven't really heard, at least I haven't, heard from any parents from Bellamy.
That's why we can just stick it in, and it's basically the same, because we had moved some children originally when this came about some years ago, I think, from.
Well, I just want to dig deep into the Pine Valley move, because, you know, I've received numerous emails. We have numerous parents here tonight who are concerned about this. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're looking at all our options. The Bellamy one, I haven't heard from any parents, so I'd just love to assume that they're okay with this.
Historically, that area was, was in Parsley in the past, so it's actually returning the area back to the, what was, this one's gone back and forth a couple of times. Also with Bellamy, we've got kid, we've got literally two classrooms that are operating out of the media center. We've got a mobile unit that we won't be using there because of some of the issues we had over the summertime, so there's no, there's literally no extra space at Bellamy that they're not using for small classrooms. All the specials are floating on carts, the library is done almost out of, on cart as well, so.
So let me, the motion that we approve the Bellamy redistricting plan.
That'd be study area two eighty-three and two eighty-four.
Second.
Okay, motion then, this is just the Bellamy.
Yes, sir.
Two Parsley.
Uh, two Parsley.
Yeah, if there is somebody who has a concern, we do have a regular enrollment process that they could try to, they could avail themselves of during that time.
It's true. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. And I think that's true with any of these, in that, that the point you make there is that we do have, I guess we call them what we call hardship hearings, where if a change we make does generate hardship of some type, then there is an appeal to the board on those individual cases. And I think the board has been very good at approving the vast majority of those that are truly hardship.
And many of them, Dr. Holliday's office accommodates them or helps works with them. They just have to know, they have to provide their own transportation, and that creates a problem.
Yeah, I should have said that at first, you're right, Ms. Nickle's in, that Dr. Holliday's office does approve, you know, based upon our policies, what they can, and I think the board kind of steps on the others. Ms. Kavanaugh, go.
I move that we approve the Pine Valley redistricting to Holly Shelter, allowing families.
Holly Tree Shelter?
I'm sorry, Holly Tree. Allowing families who have rising fourth graders and siblings in Pine Valley the choice of staying there.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
So with your, your motioning for sibling privilege essentially.
Well, I understand what you're saying then, if they, we're granting kind of like a senior privilege in that a fourth grader, being in fifth grade, if there are siblings involved, they would be allowed to remain, well, they would have a choice.
Right.
Whether to remain there or to go to Holly Tree, and I think Ms. Cover your numbers, because that was asked.
I just wanted you to know how many students were, we need to know.
Sixteen, that would be sixteen students.
Sixteen total?
Sixteen total.
That would have the privilege of that.
That would have, that has, that would be fourth graders and siblings. It'd be a net of sixteen.
Sixteen of.
You have some that are already going to, you have a fourth grader that's already attending Holly Tree, probably from employee benefit or for some other reason, but they're attending already. So you would net out with sixteen individuals after you move out, after you reduce the back out, reduce the number for the backouts that are going to Cottington and other places.
So sixteen of thirty.
How many were we backing out, thirty-five?
It's forty-two, it's thirty-eight percent of the number that was recommended to move, it's thirty-eight percent. So it's forty-two students were affected, sixteen, the net of forty-two would be sixteen students out of those forty-two.
Assuming all of them chose to take the option.
So that would be twenty-six then, that would be.
Twenty-six would be moved.
Would that give us the, still give us the space that we need at Pine Valley?
Not as much, of course.
Well, it would get us there, I think, through attrition over the time, and like I said, there's no, we have a poll these sixteen to see how many of them would actually take, take that option.
And are we just saying for this upcoming school year?
I'm sorry?
Are we just saying for this group, because if you come back with this recommendation next year, we're not approving senior privily, or?
For this current group.
This would permanently, this would permanently shift, shift these study areas into a different attendance zone. But it would allow those particular students to continue to attend Pine Valley.
So for those who are there, we're going to try to make, if I'm hearing the motion correctly, for those who are currently at Pine Valley, we're going to allow them to stay there, but in terms of the, this, this area itself, it's moving over to Holly Tree. So any student coming in?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
And Parsley.
What about the ones going to Parsley?
Mr. Chair.
Include those?
And what do we do about transportation then?
Nobody has come forward wanting to.
Well, I'm asking, are you including?
Pine Valley to Parsley?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm including those.
Okay.
So what do we do about transportation then? Because the bus is in that area, but then I'll be going to Holly Tree.
That's correct.
We have to carve out a bus route.
No, you wouldn't, they'd have, they'd have to provide your own transportation.
Yeah, they have to provide their own transportation.
You've got to provide your own transportation.
Right, provide their own transportation.
And say that would be for a matter of years, they would have to understand that if they choose that.
Forever, until the board redistricts again at some point in time.
Of course, and that would be after the Porter's Neck situation, all that's taken care of, redistricting, and then this could be revisited.
Yes, the, a major, a major elementary school redistricting would occur when the other school is open and after the replacement schools are built. However, as we mentioned before, as we mentioned last board meeting, because of our growth, we will probably be coming to you each and every year asking for some adjustments. We don't know if it will be like this, or be something greater, or something less, it may, it may just be mobile units, but it could very well be minor adjustments to district lines in order for us to accommodate the growth until we can bring extra capacity online with the new elementary school and the two replacement schools. So we're going to have to adapt each and every year and see what, and see what the, the growth brings and, and where we need to make adjustments in order to best accommodate the students, provide appropriate learning environments for them.
I, I do have a concern in view of the fact that we do have an appeals process that if we just arbitrarily do this, then what does that do as far as setting up precedent in the future? I'm just wondering if what we shouldn't do is go ahead and do what is recommended, and then advise everyone that, you know, there is an appeals process.
Well, I know, but, but there's nothing, as an example, there is an appeals process. And for legitimate hardships, the board, as everyone has stated, is quite good about granting appeals. But as an example, without the people who spoke tonight going into great detail, none of the reasons they specifically gave this evening would have constituted an actual hardship. So, so truthfully, even though we're speaking about, you know, an appeals process, based on what was presented this evening, we would reject all of the parents who come here tonight. And so, I mean, I, I think, if I'm not misunderstanding Ms. Kavanaugh's motion, is that what she's trying to do is accommodate some parents who are, you know, just feel very strongly about wanting to take care of their children.
What happens about any, any siblings that are not currently at the school but come to the school before a, another child graduates, or moves, moves? In other words, like, you know, somebody's got a fourth grader now, who's going to become a fifth grader. Got a fourth grader, a second grader, and year after next.
Yeah, I, I would probably, and we have to sort of figure out what motion.
That would be a cutoff.
Yeah.
This is only for students who are currently in the school.
That are currently there.
Yes.
Okay.
And then you're saying the siblings could stay even after the fifth grader graduated?
And the board, the board has done this before.
Okay.
But I, I think you're really, that would be such, to me, a small insignificant number. I like the way you said it the first time, in that fifth grade sibling privilege, I mean, fifth grade privilege now, and siblings, I mean, I don't think, if we're only talking sixteen children now, how many more could this be talking about as far as maybe another child coming? I don't think that.
I think we have to have a cutoff, or else it would go on in perpetuity. So I think it ought to just be the children who are currently there.
I mean, I think people like me that have four kids that just keep coming, so.
You can't just.
We just said East Des is not.
Yeah, yeah, East Des are not included.
I could have a twelve, I like four year olds. Of course, and then also, there is the appeal process, that if you have two children there, then that, if you had another, that could, uh, I just don't think it would be, the numbers would be that dramatic.
And, and I think too, when the parents realize that transportation issues and all, that they may decide to go ahead and make the move.
So, so. But that would be, that's got to be then part of the motion, that it's understood that parents have to provide their own transportation.
Yes.
As part of the motion.
Are we just talking about, you know, the fourth, the rising fifth graders and their siblings? Like, what if you have a child who is a third grader there? Are we going to tell them they have to move?
Yeah.
Now, you.
I think.
Yeah, they're not, they're not a rising fifth grader.
Yeah.
Oh, I saw what you said.
How many children are currently at the school who will be moved?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
And it's all grade levels?
But then the sixteen would be those that have, are fourth graders with siblings.
Fourth grade, current fourth graders, rising fifth graders, and their siblings. There's a total of sixteen.
So is that what you're thinking in your motion?
Yes.
Because that, I guess that's the most we've ever done, you could call it kind of like a senior privilege, whether it be on the high school level or this, allowed to finish out the year there. And what we're seeing is that your motion, Ms. Kavanaugh, is that one other sibling that, that's there now.
If they're there now, if they are not in the school now, there is no privilege.
And they must provide their own transportation.
Correct.
Does everyone understand the motion? Any other questions? All those in favor, Ms. Kavanaugh, was there was a second?
Well, if it wasn't, I'll give a second.
Mr. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So it's approved, what, six, one? Item E, owner preferred.
You got the, you got the third.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Mobile classrooms?
Yes.
Oh, the mobile, was this the?
Move for approval?
Okay. We're considering the mobile classroom units for Bradley Creek and Murrayville. Well, I think that was previously discussed.
Yeah, I don't remember.
For those units at those locations.
And, and how many at each school, Mr. Hens?
Mobile units?
Yes.
Not sure, Eddie, do you know?
Two.
Two to three.
Yeah, two.
Well, there are two for each.
Two for each?
Two. Two to three.
Two to three.
Oh, I thought you said two.
Are these going to be new or used classrooms? Yes.
These would all be new units.
New units, and of course, with restrooms.
Yes, ma'am. These would, these would all be new units with restrooms. And we were out at the sites actually yesterday and today, looking at, at citing the units. And that's really the determining factor, whether we put in two units now or three. And we, and we may put in two now, and I, and Bradley Creek in particular, you know, we may be back in a couple of years requesting that we put two more there.
And we're not going to run into any impervious surface issues like we did at Parsley?
Uh, no, Parsley was unique because it had a low-density stormwater permit issued from the state.
Oh, is that it? Okay.
If they have requests from principals to try not to put them in the front of the school. We, I, I've, I've talked to Ms. Keiker, and we, we came up with a, a agreeable location for the first two. If we do put any more back there, we may have to, to put them up, and they're not going to be in the front of the school, but in the back of the school, but they'll be visible.
Well, by that time, hopefully, we may have at least the northern school done, I would hope.
Possibly, and, and these, you know, the, the, the thought is that, that the units we are putting out at schools now are temporary, because when we redistrict in 2019, you know, we will have more seats than students. Don't we have some temporaries from like nineteen sixty-four?
I'm not going to say. He's out on his own limb now.
Don't knock him.
We've got some temporary that are older than me.
We just got rid of the nineteen sixty-six one, so.
We want to use, and that's the reason we, we're recommending that we purchase new units, is because when, you know, when we do bring on the new school, the, the intent is that we would then use these units to start replacing the nineteen sixties units.
Now, do these come turnkey? Are they furnished? What about technology?
They don't come furnished, but, but we will furnish them. We will look for the, look at the school first. A lot of times, they have classrooms that are furnished, but they could be in, you know, not, or non-traditional classroom spaces. We would look to see what furniture they have in, at the school. Then we would look to supplement that with, with surplus furniture. And then, if there's anything that they, that they lack after that, we would, we would supplement that.
And technology, is that included in the budget for?
We would. We would, we would use the same process for technology. We would call Dawn, tell her, we, no, we would look, we would first look at the school, and then we'd look at surplus, and then anything that, that they needed beyond what they have, we would provide new. So they, they are turnkey. I mean, this, our goal is to, to fully furnish and outfit a mobile unit just as we would a classroom in the building.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? We did have a motion in the second, correct?
Uh, one more question. Remember when we did Murrayville? We planned for the, this very situation. So will it be easier to connect those units at Murrayville than it will be to Bradley Creek?
Um, we did plan for four units there, and, but since that time, the school has built an amphitheater and a, some gardens, and we think it's more cost-effective to put them in another location than to relocate those things.
But I thought we would have run, already run water and sewer lines out there.
We have water and sewer that's, that's there in, in both locations. It would not cost us any more to put them where we, where we're planning on putting them now than it would where we had shown them on the drawings.
Okay.
I mean, when, when we show them on the drawings, we make sure we have water and sewer in close proximity. It's, it's not stubbed up, it's not a, you know, we don't set them and plug them in. You know, there's still some connection cost.
And they will be in place by school again?
That, that is our intent. You know, this is all subject to the budget being approved and receiving funds. I mean, we don't have the money for these units at this time. But, you know, we're, we're moving ahead with our design and, and trying to get our bids in place so that once the budget's approved and we have the funds, we can move forward as quickly as possible. And if they're not there on the first day of school, they will be there very shortly after.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item E, owner preferred ad alternate for panic alarms in schools, appendix M, Mr. Hens.
Yes, request the board approve the ad alternate for the panic alarm so that we can have one manufacturer, one system standardized throughout the school district.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item F, bids for Williston Middle School Mechanical Room renovations, appendix N, Mr. Hens.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, request the board approve the bids for Williston.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item G, bids for Alderman Elementary School Floor Replacement, appendix O, Mr. Hens.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, request the board approve the bids for Alderman's floor replacement.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions?
Yeah. Explain to me what, what they're doing there. I mean, I, I don't know the floor that needs to be removed, but.
Floor is cracked and, and settling there.
Is that where they, the sides go up?
Yeah, it's in the, as you're walking down the hall, like you're heading out towards the playground area.
Yeah, okay.
I was there today and saw it, and that, trust me, it is.
So they got to remove the slab too, huh? That seems like a big deal.
Yeah, it was there when I was teaching there, so it's.
Well, you know, it's, we've advocated for terrazzo floor. This was a terrazzo floor that apparently was either put down poorly, or as I was, was said to me, it sits on Lake Alderman. Apparently, when, when it rains, that whole section underneath the, it's a new addition. It wasn't built when the fifty-year addition was, it was built about forty years ago. And when it rains, apparently, water gets all up underneath that slab. So, I mean, you know, one of the things you probably ought, should be looking at is what can you do to alleviate that, that water situation, because the rest of the slab of the fifty-year-old building looks fine. It's just this, this new section.
Nothing's as good as the old stuff.
Say what?
Nothing's as good as the old stuff.
It's like they used to, right?
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item H, contract for installation of projectors, appendix P, Dawn Brenson.
Request that the board approve the projector installation contract.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item I, Achieve Three Thousand Differentiated Literacy Solutions Soul Source Resolution, appendix Q, Dawn Brenson.
Request the board approve the Achieve Three Thousand Soul Source Resolution.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any, any questions?
I have a couple of questions. First, I mean, I kind of think I understand what this does, but explain it to me. And then, secondly, why did we pick these schools to do this and not pick other schools?
I will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Um, what Achieve Three Thousand is, it's a software solution that provides our children with better access to informational text. And it allows for the adjustment of content information at different lexiles. So, you know, a child in high school and a child in middle school can be reading about the same topic, but it'll adjust appropriately for their, their lexile reading level. These schools were chosen because of their interest in this particular solution. We received this funding as a part of our digital learning grant that we received from the state. And so we wanted to work with schools that had a vested interest in utilizing the program as opposed to the, a top-down model where we were pushing it out to schools. We're looking to gather data around the outcomes of utilizing this program, and then sharing that information with the larger principal body.
If we didn't use this grant for this purpose, what else could we use it for? If we didn't use this grant for this purpose, what else could we use it for?
Well, the grant in and of itself is limited to, um, the purchase and utilization of digital learning materials. Um, we are actually using this grant in other ways as well to support our Math One, Math Two, and Math Three instruction in the high school and also to provide some additional su- support to fourth and fifth grade teachers, um, in the area of math across the district. This particularly is because this is, this is not something that we currently have and a service that we currently provide to our schools, and that was part of the reason for doing that. But any other digital learning material that we wanted to invest in, that would have been an option. But this was written into the grant and specifically approved for this purpose.
As a parent of somebody in that too, I wanna say hallelujah that we have some support for that.
Been listening, yes.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved. Item J, Soliant Health Contract, appendix R, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board ask that you approve this. Uh, we've had some resignations and retirements in our speech pathologists, and we are contracting, um, to take care of some IEPs through the end of the year with, uh, Soliant.
Motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved. Item K, North Carolina School Boards Association Board Training Credit, uh, Mrs. Adams has, uh, I don't see it on my computer, but, uh, for the, uh, I'm trying to think, the, the work session. Oh, okay. Uh, I can't read that.
Move for approval.
These are, uh, I couldn't get it to come up. But these.
Move for your reading glasses.
Well, I guess, I can, now that I, that I squint, I think my glasses are.
That's for a TV commercial like this.
For the, uh, meetings, uh, work sessions, et cetera, uh, is there a motion to approve?
Yes. I can see it just fine.
Did you mo- a motion or a second?
Derek motioned, I seconded.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved, thank you. Uh, I have my glasses checked for you now in the next meeting. General, uh, item L, the General Fund Budget Amendment Number Seven, Legion Stadium Contribution, appendix T, Mary Hazel Small.
This was a non-typical budget amendment, that's why we pulled it from the consent agenda. I'll turn it over to Mary Hazel.
Um, the Legion Stadium Commission unanimously approved a cost-sharing proposal for improvements at Hardy Baseball Field. Um, the, um, new Carolina Beach Baseball, um, LLC that recently acquired the Elementary Sharks is gonna pay for half the improvements, and then the city, the county, and the school system would equally share the, the other half, and our portion would be fifty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. It's our question.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Uh, we have two folks who serve in that commission. Anything you guys can add to this that we've missed?
Dr. Hickey, anything you'd like to add?
Well, I, I'm sort of a little torn by this, to be honest. Um, and, and actually, I think the person who said it best, Dr. Markley, uh, had forwarded us an email that, uh, the county manager, Chris Coudray, had initially sent to, uh, Mr. White and Mr. Barfield. And, uh, I pulled up the emails that Mr. Coudray, uh, wrote, so I can just read it, uh, parts of it aloud. And, uh, what he writes is that he would, he's talking to the commissioners, of course. "I would ask that you consider one overreaching thought. Is Legion Stadium a minor league sports venue first or a high school athletic complex first? If the complex is first and foremost becoming a minor league sports venue, we should really examine the cost of the improvements versus the return on the investments. Example, sales tax, shared income revenue over the period of the debt. Such a complex should be state-of-the-art for the purposes of minor league professional sports. However, the investment should be measured against the professional sports backdrop. If the complex is primarily for the benefit of New Hanover High School, then we need to think about the equity of investments in our other three high school complexes. What is the right proportion of investment at Hogard and Laney, in particular because of the age of those facilities, but also future modifications of Ashley? And there's more, but I will just leave it at that. So the question I have for the board, and, and, you know, uh, I think people have been on this board longer than I, are better at answering this question. The improvements, although nice, are they really of a benefit to a high school baseball team? And if we think they are of a benefit to the high school baseball team, then we should go ahead and we should agree to this. If we think they're nice, but they really are not necessary for a high school baseball team, then I, then I think we should, uh, reject this. But I, I'd like to know what the thoughts of the boards is.
I, my son gets dressed outside for lacrosse practice. I am not in favor of spending fifty-three thou- uh, thousand dollars on new seats in a stadium when we don't have adequate facilities at our high schools. I, I just, I'm not.
Well, since I serve on the Legion Stadium Commission and this passed unanimously by the Legion Stadium Commission, which is made up of Dr. Hickey and myself, uh, two county commissioners, two city council, and a citizen at large, uh, and with the total cost being three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and I don't disagree with some of the comments about other sports and so forth, but I always think about the situation that New Hanover High School is in, in that they have no sports facility. They have no, anything on their campus other than what is provided at Legion Stadium. And now also, I think with the, uh, the girls softball team, I know they're fixing up, uh,
Godwin.
I never, yeah, Godwin, I never can remember the name of that, uh, cause I've been by there enough where they're painting, they're doing all kind of stuff there. The, uh, weather, I think this, uh, i- i- if it's necessary, you know, I mean, to plant a cow pasture like I did when I was a kid, you know, and that's basically what, uh.
So, so where H- 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 over played when you were a kid?
No. But what I'm saying is that, yes, it does benefit the city, because the city owns Legion Stadium. What we've all. Pardon?
And lets us use it.
Lets us use it. Uh, and, and we pay a, a portion, and the county pays a portion. Uh, but to me, it, it, I think the commission seemed to agree that, uh, yes, it does benefit the, uh, the professional team that's in there, the Sharks, but then also, New Hanover High School does, uh, benefit. Uh, and I think there are various sports that we could, we could single out that says, yeah, their improvements are needed in that particular sport. Uh, but this particular situation was, uh, just for Legion Stadium, and, uh, in, in my thinking, as far as it did benefit New Hanover High School, cause with the money that we've already put in there, that the county and the city have put in, uh, to me, it just seemed like a pretty good deal for that amount of money, fifty-three thousand dollars, to get the improvements uh, that would make that baseball stadium compared to many other high school baseball stadiums around the state.
See, Mr. Hayes, now you, you changed my mind. I, I guess I agree with you.
Yeah, it's, it's.
And that's, that's why I asked for your educated opinion.
Hey, it's been a battle for years, in a sense, uh, uh, as far as the, the facilities and so forth that we provide, uh, in particular Legion Stadium, cause it, it has gotten more complicated. When the county used to own it, I mean, it was built really for the purpose of Legion evolved, and it was built for New Hanover High School many, many years ago. Uh, and it, it's evolved where I understand the city's position, where they're trying to, more money that they could recoup as far as maintenance, the operation of the stadium and so forth. Uh, and, and is it perfect in other areas? No, but to me, for the amount of money, and then what was gonna be, take place there, cause then this also allows improvements in the backfield with things that the city's gonna do, which will greatly increase parking, tear down the fire tower, there are many other things that are gonna take place that, uh.
So it's not just building fences and seats?
Well, with this one, the, the, it's, this three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and the Sharks are gonna put up half, and that's why they thought the other half could be split, which was in the city, the county, and the school system. And, uh, I know the county commissioners that were there, uh, cause that's eventually where we get this money, they, they just thought it was a really good deal you know, for the school system and, well, for the county as a whole.
Would they loan us the money?
Ultimately.
Ultimately, yeah, ultimately.
Do you know if they've approved it yet? The county? They have?
Pretty sure they have.
Well, the, the. Well, Chairman White and Commissioner Barfield are the two that are on that, and they both approved it. So I, I don't think it's gonna have any trouble with the county commissioners, uh, approving it. And if we don't approve it, and the city and the county, if they do, I don't really know where that, that leaves us.
Yeah.
I think it leaves us at Godwin Field, maybe.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah, everything being transferred over to Godwin. Okay, but that's some of the background. Uh, any, did we have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm a second. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, I'm opposed.
Two, is there? Okay.
Five, two, Mrs. Adams.
Okay, uh, next item, item twelve, call to the audience, is there?
I don't think there is an audience.
I think I called the audience.
Would any of the, would any of the sheriffs like to say anything?
Would you like to say something?
Zepedees, uh, anything to ch-?
They didn't sign up, they can't.
Can we get those facial expressions on camera for the audience, please?
Okay, uh, next item, uh, item, uh, thirteen, okay, correspondence, any correspondence, any board members would like to share?
Mr. Chairman, today we all received an email from Leanne Winter with the North Carolina School Boards Association with, uh, suggestion of two resolutions regarding teacher compensation. I'd like for the board to consider at our next meeting the second one. And, um, I'll just read off, there were a lot of whereas's, but the action part is, resolve that the New Hanover County Board of Education supports the following steps to improve teacher compensation in North Carolina and make the state a more attractive place for teachers to work. Number one, provide sufficient salary increases to the teacher's salary schedule so that all teachers are adequately compensated. Number two, reinstate yearly step so that teachers in their first five years of teaching are not held at the same salary for that five-year period. And three, reinstate the master's degree salary schedule for any teacher who obtains a master's degree in either education or their field of teaching. Be it further resolved that the New Hanover County Board of Education appreciates the plan put forward by the governor and the legislative, legislation leadership to improve compensation for beginning teachers, but believes that there are a number of other important measures that are left unaddressed by this plan. Be it further resolved that the New Hanover County Board of Education respectfully requests that the General Assembly take the following actions. Provide sufficient salary increases to the salary schedule so that veteran teachers as well as beginning teachers receive adequate compensation increases. Drop the component of the governor's plan that would freeze salaries at the same level for the first nine years of teaching and instead reinstate yearly step increases in years one through five and reinstate the master's degree salary schedule for any teacher who obtained a master's degree in either education or in their field of teaching. I'd like for us to look over that and to consider it and possibly bring it back as an action item next month.
I'd agree with that.
Okay, I think, and that res- that came today, right?
Yes, it's from Leanne Winter, and if you didn't get it, if you'll let me know, I'll forward my copy to you.
Okay, I think, uh, it's a good suggestion.
Some of the school board, school board emails.
Or school board email, that we can read over that between now and our next meeting, and it's, uh,
Well, that gives you two to put it on the agenda.
Right, and there's two, two votes already to put it on the agenda, so we'll have it on our agenda at our next board meeting, uh, to, to, uh, take action on. Any other correspondence, anyone would like to share?
On a lighter note, uh, I think it was two weekends ago now, I, uh, was pleased to attend the elementary all-county chorus production. Um, a little girl was in it, and it was a wonderful, uh, presentation. It's, it's amazing how talented these, uh, little children are. Uh, and then the second bit of correspondence, not, not nearly as interesting as Ms. Kavanaugh's, but did we all realize that this is National School Breakfast Week?
Yes, it was in the paper today.
Uh, and, and this is something I would like to look at. I, I know that Brunswick County actually provides breakfast to all of their students. Uh, we, we only provide it free of charge to those with free and reduced lunch. And I'd actually like to see what the fiscal implication would be to offer it to all of the children. Uh, if we, if we really believe that, you know, breakfast promotes learning, uh, I wonder what it would cost just to offer it to all the children?
I think it's something that I know we have brought up before, and, and I know, uh, with the school boards conference, uh, one year, they had a breakout session, I think with Ashboro City Schools, that, uh, had a session dealing with this. And, uh, their school, uh, food service director, uh, had worked out a plan to, I think based upon the enrollment of, of students in the, uh, free and reduced, the numbers were such that, uh, I don't remember exactly how they did it, but that's exactly what they did, Dr. Hickey. I think it was, uh, was it breakfast and lunch that they?
I mean, you might just have to water the eggs down a little.
Well, I, I do, I do have something to kind of tag along to that. I was reading at College Par today, and I asked the two different classes if they had anything they wanted to talk to board members about, and, um, both classes mentioned school lunch that they felt like they weren't big enough. So, I don't know if that can be a discussion item somewhere down the road.
Portion size?
Yeah, they all said, we're hungry, we're hungry, we're hungry. So.
But wasn't the Brunswick County breakfast, wasn't that a grant that they received? It didn't come out of their?
I'd be glad to research.
Pardon?
I'd be, I'd be glad to research.
Federal funding that went with that. There was a federal program around universal, uh, breakfast.
Okay, thank you.
While, while we're talking about eating, if, if a school has a negative balance in their school lunch program, in other words, they've got students who owe money and they don't collect it, I am hearing that they're going to have to reimburse the school system for any shortage. Is that correct?
The, the board approved a policy last year to, to.
We did?
To change that. Um, currently, the, the, um, enterprise fund is not allowed to pay that. The general fund has to write a check at the end of every year for those, um, amounts that were never collected. Um, and the board, in order to encourage schools to work with parents to try to collect the money, um, has is allowing schools the opportunity to either pay it out of their general fund or use budgeted funds to pay it.
The problem is, a lot, in a lot of cases, the, if I remember, I remember concern last year was since the schools didn't have a real vested interest in collecting this, they weren't always the most helpful in helping them collect these funds. Uh, so, we're either paying it out of the central office, uh, I mean, your general fund, or we're paying it out of the school's general fund. Somebody's paying food nutrition for the, for the meal.
Well, you, you know, I, I guess what, and I, I realize, I guess, we just can't give them a cheese sandwich if they get behind, but uh, apparently, there's some issue about parents being unwilling, who may qualify for free and reduced lunch, who are being unwilling to fill out the paperwork to be able to get the free and reduced lunch. And then therefore, even though the school is trying to get these people, you can't forge a signature on there. Uh, you know, I mean, other than taking out a warrant or, or suing them, uh, you know, it looks like if the school has made an effort, then it seems, it just seems wrong to punish the school for what the kids doing, and if the school is doing all that they can reasonably do. Uh, I, I mean, I, I didn't realize, I guess.
But part of it is, if, if you look at the different schools, the collection of efforts vary from school to school in terms of how successful they are in getting that. Ashley is probably our most, is, is a, one of our biggest high schools, but they're.
They only had.
Fifty-four dollars or something.
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
But, I mean, do we not have some, I mean, if, if parents refuse to pay their lunch bills, do we, does the school just have to continue to go into debt to, with this child, or is there not some action we can take?
Well, the problem is, we're not gonna punish, I'm not gonna tell a child they can't eat because they're, because of the actions of their parent. But, we, we don't, if a child owes, uh, We don't, if a child owes debt, they'll get the basic meal of that day, but they're not going to pick up an extra bag of chips on the way and charge that. I'm not going, I.
I mean, you know, when we're talking about giving away, I mean, we're talking free breakfast potentially, but, you know, then we're hitting schools and things that impact, and probably impact our poorest schools the worst, and the fact that we're going to take away from their general fund, because it's the poor schools where you're going to probably have the greatest free and reduced lunch. I mean, I know I looked on the list, I think what, Hannover was like nine thousand dollars or something.
The thing that.
Now, I would tell you, that was almost, that was, they were one of our largest uncollected.
I know that.
Funds last year, and when we put this policy in, all of a sudden, their rate of, what was owed to them went down considerably.
Well, apparently, it's gone back up.
Yeah, it's not where it was last year.
Okay, but, you know, I don't know, what can we as a school board, school system do to help collect? I know there's been those groups that, that's been at the district meetings, Don, that have talked about helping collect some of those food debts.
You know, a little bit of outside companies?
Yeah.
The thing is, with the parents who, say, the first year they're approved for the free or reduced, they assume that it's going to be every year without re-filing. And then they don't re-file, and the debts get there, and it's hard to get those parents to come in.
They're sending the paperwork home, and the parents won't sign it.
Exactly, because they said, I've already signed it once before. So that creates a problem.
There are some things we can do. If you've got a kid whose free reduced lunch is at one school, but the paperwork's not done at another school.
That can trash for.
You can transfer. At the end of the day, in some cases, the social worker can actually sign off on that form, but there's some things you've got to do procedurally.
Are we doing any of that at this point?
We're using.
We are.
Available.
Yeah, we are, and Imar and the social workers and the principals are all working together to try, and those people who have not signed the forms but are eligible, we're trying to make sure that they do sign the forms, that they understand what's happening, and that they can get the money. You do run into some that are recalcitrant and just do not want to sign it. But as Dr. Markley indicated, in some of those cases, we can get it signed in a different way and get it authorized in a different way. We are making strides so that if they have siblings and they're in another school, and that the paperwork follows them, that they do get the free and reduced lunch. Sometimes there's a lag, and one sibling gets it and one sibling doesn't get it. We're trying to rectify all of that and so, and take care of all those glitches, but.
So if, for example, there's a family that's got a child in elementary school and a child in the middle school, if the middle schooler is getting free and reduced lunch, then is possible for us to qualify the elementary?
Yes, absolutely, they'll, absolutely.
The information.
I'd like to officially apologize for bringing up the school breakfast week at this point in the evening.
Accepted.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jerry.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss way of acquisition and personnel.
Well, and folks, I would suggest.
Before you make that motion, hear what Dr. Markley has to say.
We have a appeals hearing next week that the entire board has to attend. There's nothing in tonight's closed session that can't be put off for a week.
I remove my motion and move it. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, so we will have to announce that closed session, but it'll be after the appeals hearing next week.
All those in favor?
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Well, excuse me, just one minute. We didn't finish the agenda. Under the announcements, I do want to announce that we do have best foot forward coming up, the fifteenth. We have our retreat on the eighteenth, and we have our closed session that Dr. Markley just was talking about on the twelfth.
We have a motion, all those in favor, please say aye. We are adjourned.